Today, "Deep Blue San Francisco" votes to recall three progressive school board members. And in completely unrelated news, Republicans appear to have a comfortable lead in the midterms, according to a new poll. Also, Hillary Clinton dodges questions about whether or not she paid to spy on the Trump campaign. We've got all that and more coming up, and it all starts right now. Welcome to the News and Why It Matters. I am Sarah Gonzalez, and I am really excited today because I have two gentlemen in studio who have not actually been on my set in what feels like forever. One of them is actually right, like literally right next door to me, but just, I mean, he's Glenn Beck. So I'm great. I'm great. How are you?
Good to see you. Very good.
It's really good to have you.
I know. I'm never around the studios now this time of day.
Well, so it's funny, Glenn, because, well, let me hold this thought. I do want to introduce also Sean Spicer, author of the new book, which you really need Radical Nation, and of course, host of Spicer &amp; Co. And by the way, Sean, I just think it's so perfect that you have Joe and Kamala completely masked on the book cover.
It is. It's nice that they're masked.
And I have, may I say, I am thrilled for your success.
Thank you.
You are killing it.
Well, thank you. And it's always, I appreciate your support. You've been so kind to me when I wrote my first book. I sat at a table not far from here. I get lost whenever I come down to these studios. And thank you for your constant support. It's been amazing. It's been a pleasure to have you on the show.
It's fun when I can turn the tables on you.
I know. But you know, to your point, and I don't mean to take away, it's so great to sit at a table with folks, because I know that I've been on with you before, and you've been on my show. You've been kind enough to join me, and it's nice to sit around the table and see people in person.
It's weird, isn't it?
I know. It's weird. You're like, there's a human.
Yeah, exactly. No, Glenn, I was gonna say, so, you know, when I hurt my back, and I was, you know, I had some muscle relaxers to do the show, and I was like very laid back, and we're at the end of the show, and I'm like, they show the thumbnail for my show, and you're in the top corner, and I'm like, hey, wait a second, that guy's on, I haven't seen him in over a year on this show. We need to get him back on. So I'm glad that you're here. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's get into some of these headlines, see what you guys think about this, gentlemen. So, parents and residents in San Francisco voted overwhelmingly to recall three progressive members from the city's school board. They were accused of pushing leftist ideology, shocker, imagine that, and putting children last during the pandemic. This is President Gabriela Lopez, Vice President Fauga Moliga, and Commissioner Allison Collins. And here's the thing, the board was prioritizing renaming 44 schools in the city based on their progressive ideology. I mean, you can't have schools named after people like Abraham Lincoln.
No, can't.
That's just, that's too far.
Or Dianne Feinstein.
Yeah.
Right.
Crazy, crazy.
Right, right. And so, and then there was one of them, Collins, who also came under fire for some anti-Asian tweets. But this is "deep blue San Francisco," and at least 70% of voters supported removing each member from the school board as a revolt against their agenda. I just, you know, you have this happening, you have what happened in Virginia.
Yeah, if you're looking for the next election, don't worry, the Republicans can screw anything.
Oh, they have plenty of time for that.
Anything. Oh, yeah.
I agree with that.
No, we can roll Mitch McConnell out, and he'll say something or do something, or not do anything, which is the favorite of people like Mitch McConnell.
Well, but they, so they, they were prioritizing renaming these schools, but meanwhile, they were, they had nothing to say about the children not going to school, being involved in remote learning, masked up until the day that they die. I mean, they were, parents are tired of it.
A couple of things. One, they only could recall three, right? So if they could have recalled them all, they would have. Two, it was overwhelming. Three, the mayor supported it. So the mayor basically saw the political headwinds of, there was a Democrat, and said, get rid of them.
And the mayor is no, she's no conservative.
Four, the two individuals that started this recall campaign voted for Joe Biden, right? These are not the two Republicans in San Francisco. Five, these people didn't support the recall of Gavin Newsom, right? So think about this. These are Democrats that basically said, we're with Gavin Newsom, we voted for Joe Biden, we're liberals, but you guys went too far. And then enough people in San Francisco agreed with them. This shows you how far the Left has gone, where they've gone so woke that San Francisco overwhelmingly removes all three. It says, we'll go as far as you'll let us go to come back a little bit. I mean, that's not a good sign.
This is what happened with Woodrow Wilson. Woodrow Wilson and his people went crazy over the line. I mean, almost where we are now, they had people spying on their neighbors, paid for by the federal government. It was bad. He scared the American people so badly by the end that they went 180 degrees the other direction. And it was so bad that that's why progressivism wasn't even heard of, you know, up until recently. It was always there in the background, but it was not the front and centerpiece. It was liberal, because they had so damaged the progressive title that they couldn't, nobody would vote for a progressive. That's when FDR takes progressive out, replaces liberal, that meaning, to make it sound like a progressive. That's why we lost the liberal and libertarians.
The thing that's interesting about that, right, is leading up until this election, and the point that I made in my book is, these guys, Biden realizes what he wants to do is become the most progressive president ever. They're starting to get scared, I think, because they've now realized how much it's costing them. When they, when they see it happen, right, the rest of his party saying they thought this was somehow going to be a cool thing. And I think to some degree, the Alexandria Ocasio-Cortezes, the Cori Bushes, still double down on it. But the rest of the party's going, we-
Okay, so wait a minute, wait a minute. Because I, you would know the answer to this. They do look scared, but this has been a 100-year dream for them. They are close to their autocratic state, okay? And if I believed what they believe, I'd be like, guys, we're so close, the economy collapses, we got it. We have all of the triggers ready to go, the machines ready. Don't give up now. I think this makes them more dangerous.
Except, I mean, think about, this is what's the interesting thing of, think about who's retiring from the congressional ranks right now. We just had yesterday, the 30th House Democrat retire. These are not vulnerable Democrats, right? These are safe Democrats. They literally just have to breathe, and they get reelected. They don't want to be in the minority. And the problem is, is that they realize that they're gonna lose.
Now, who was the Democrat that just retired? Was it yesterday?
Yeah, from Long Island.
That he, that he, no, I don't think that was it. He came out afterwards and started just blasting the Democrats? It was one of the last few.
Right. Well, they, yeah, but the one yesterday was the female from Long Island.
Okay.
But I know who you're talking about.
Yeah. I can't remember either. But he came out, I mean, he's a, he was, he was known as a clear Democrat in a very blue section.
Right. And I think what's happening is now that they're realizing the damage that it's having on them politically, right? Biden came in there and I think thought, hey, I'm gonna champion this stuff, I'm gonna go down in history as this progressive guy that appointed all of these people. I appointed, I mean, think about it. They've changed the metric, or they, correct myself. They tried to change the metric of success, not achieving something, but appointing people. The first black woman of color, the first LGBTQ department head. All of these things weren't actually a metric of success anymore. It wasn't, I got more people back to work, I lowered the unemployment rate, I rebuilt the military. All of these things that we used to do this, this all became appointments, right? Think about, those aren't metrics of success. I appointed the first female justice on the Supreme Court of color. This isn't about success. We're not talking about qualifications anymore. We've lost the definition of experience, of qualifications, of success, to just allow progressivism. Because what now goes on in Biden world forevermore is, well, Joe Biden appointed the first. Now, in order to outdo him, you have to appoint two, or three, or four of whatever it is. He appointed the first transgender four-star. Granted, it's for the public health service, but he gets to say, he was the first, and it's not gonna, he's not gonna have to be judged on what the economy did, because it was in the tank.
So you would know the answer to this question, I think. I just watched a documentary on the last czars, Nicholas, okay? And they were clueless. They were so far away from the people. They had no idea they were gonna end up shot, okay? They've always been czars. What? The people love us. No, they hate you, okay? Is Joe Biden so isolated that he doesn't know what people are saying?
Yes. He is. And I think they, I mean, you think about, about what he sees and who runs him. There's a passage in the book, I mean, they call Ron Klain Prime Minister Klain, his chief of staff. They maintain, I mean, think about the schedule. They put it out every day, and no one makes fun of it. But yet, his schedule every day says he gets the presidential briefing. That's like eating breakfast. That's part of the job. And they act like that's a heavy lift. That's what's on his schedule every day. And then he goes to Delaware, as if that's an activity. So, you know, on the Trump schedule, they always used to say that he was spending the weekend at a Trump property, because that's where he lived. I mean, he lived at Mar-a-Lago, or he lived at Bedminster, which is where his houses are. Joe Biden goes to Delaware. That's fine. I don't care. But that's the same thing. That's what he does. And then he has nothing on his schedule, right? So he is isolated. He has a handful of people, and it literally, it's four or five guys, and I say guys, it's four or five white guys for all this talk about diversity, that literally surround him and keep the flow of information. You know what was funny? Early on in the administration, they fired the deputy press secretary. We don't need to go into this. But the reason I bring it up is why. The deputy press secretary was a guy named TJ Ducklo. He had been Biden's press secretary, right? He'd been close to the family forever. When they fired him, Jen Psaki goes out, the White House press secretary, and says, White House Chief of Staff Ron Klain dismissed him. Now, I was the White House press secretary, and I'm thinking, whoa, wait, timeout. This guy's this close to the president and the first family, and the president wasn't in the loop on firing him? What's going on?
You think he knew, or you just think that it would have been, it should have been the president to say-
Yeah, that the press secretary is going out there and explaining the decision-making process, and not, not admitting that the president was part of the process. And I'm thinking to myself, this isn't some low-level staffer. This is a close friend and confidant. He was the traveling press secretary for the last, whatever, two years. He was with the guy every day in his home in Delaware, in the basement. I mean, he was the one guy that could go down there, you know, and hang out. And yet, you didn't tell him he's no longer gonna be around? But that's what's happening. They've isolated him. So every day they wake up and they go, everything's great. It's like the Lego Movie. Everything is awesome. Kamala's doing a great job, sir.
He must be really perplexed.
The border is secure.
When he goes out, yeah, yeah. When he goes out and he sees people that are-
They said the other day, he goes, you know, the one thing I really want to do is get out to see the American people, and they send him to Virginia. They're like, what about if we just go to Northern Virginia? That's a house.
Well, I mean, that may explain whenever he, when was this, over Christmas, when he was on with a gentleman, and he, they said, let's go Brandon, and he said, I agree. And everyone was like, what?
Yeah. You really look, and it wasn't even like-
Do you know what that means?
You didn't look like you were trying to get, he didn't look like he even got the joke.
No.
No.
No, it just right over his head. That's what it looked like. Okay, I want to, as we're talking about this, you know, look, Glenn, I don't disagree with you. The Republicans have a lot of time to screw things up, and they're very, very good at it. Very efficient.
They take victory out of the jaws of defeat every time.
I don't disagree with you. But I also think the leftists who do continue to double down, and they are not trying to course correct, are also very good at screwing things up. So try this one on for size. So, not in San Francisco, but in Oakland. Meanwhile, you have a teacher who just posted this TikTok video about the transition closet over in Fremont High School. And so basically, the idea is that the students who want to say that they are a different gender go to school in the clothes that their parents put them in, and then they can change in the transition closet and be who they actually are. Watch.
The goal of the transition closet is for our students to be able to wear the clothes that their parents approve of, come to school, and then swap out into the clothes that fit who they truly are. And I use the idea that this is like Superman changing in a phone booth. But that idea actually goes a lot further than that, because Superman isn't Clark Kent. Clark Kent is actually the disguise. And when Clark Kent goes into the phone booth, he transforms into Superman, who's really just who he truly is, Kal-El. And so, this gives our trans students the opportunity to be the superheroes that we know they are.
So, I mean, look, that's giving Oakland a chance to not be so deep blue anymore either, I think. Because you're, basically, the overwhelming idea from the Left is that they should be able to have more of a say in your children's upbringing than you should have. I mean, how can anyone agree with that?
I think Afghanistan was a huge turning point, but I also think Virginia was a giant turning point. When you start to call parents terrorists, when you start to tell parents, you don't have a say in what we say. And we're not talking about, hey, you know, I used to do long division this way. It's the Kal-El, that's really what he's, oh my gosh. When you get to that point, parents are not going to sit down. And that's why I think women are changing. Women are changing.
Those suburban women that they said Trump lost?
Yeah. They don't mess with children. Don't mess with them.
Yeah, it's not just this, Sean. It's like, kids in Illinois being locked in rooms, in closets, because, not to transition, but because they're not wearing a mask, right?
The thing that I, I don't get, I went to public school for K through 8. We went and we learned. It was math, science, English. We had something called like life studies, I think, in 7th and 8th grade, and that was mostly like biology-type stuff. But like, I don't, I think that there are certain things that parents, that are saved for home, right?
Right.
But we're falling behind in the world competitively. There's a place for those kind of discussions. I don't know that we need to be going to school and focusing on things that aren't focused on learning. And so, I just, I've kind of wondered when we're gonna get back to that. And I think, you know, you've seen more and more calls for homeschooling, for private schools, and the downside to this, and it's always been part of the problem, is that we're, because we don't have school choice in so many areas, or charter schools are getting pushed aside again, that you leave kids who don't have those opportunities to get stuck with a lot of teachers, who then push an agenda onto them. And that's what I think the unfortunate part of this is, is that the kids who don't have opportunities, who are at the poorer end of the opportunity scale, get stuck with teachers who want to push an agenda onto them. And it's not this, I mean, day after day after day, you read a story about a teacher pushing an agenda. I mean, I think it's one thing if a kid comes in and says, I want to do something. Okay, well, that's one thing. When the teacher is pushing an agenda and saying, I mean, we pulled up a story the other day about a class in Connecticut where the teacher was telling them to pick out slices of pizza and talk about-
We talked about that, too.
Their sexual positions. And I'm like, how is this relevant to learning in school? I mean, that's, that's not a discussion that's appropriate.
No. Left or right?
Left or right, yeah, exactly. But it's just not inappropriate. That's left for the family. It's not appropriate to be going to a public school even.
Yeah. All right, we've got more to come. But first, we want to thank our sponsor, ExpressVPN. So, look, using the internet without ExpressVPN, it's kind of like checking in your baggage at the airport without anything to protect it, like a lock or something. You think that your stuff is gonna be kept private, but you don't know who's going to be going through your personal items.
Yes, you do. It's Department of Homeland Security, and a lock doesn't stop them.
Well, that's fair. All of these things are true, all right? But when you go online without a VPN, internet service providers can see every single website that you visit. They can legally sell this information.
The Clinton campaign.
Exactly. I know. And think about like, send, send, go. And like, you never know who is going to steal your data out there, or who's just gonna take it and sell it for a profit. Look, when you use ExpressVPN, ISPs, they can't see your online activity. Your identity is anonymized by a secure VPN server. Your data is also encrypted for maximum protection. Big tech, like, these are not good guys that we're talking about, okay? Don't let them have access to your data. You can fire up the app and click one button. It works on all your devices, phones, laptops, even routers. So everyone who shares your Wi-Fi can be protected. We use ExpressVPN, and it's not, your computer's not gonna lag. It is going to work seamlessly, and you can know that you will be protected. Secure your online activity by visiting expressvpn.com/why today. You will get an extra three months for free with expressvpn.com/why. The CEO of YouTube has acknowledged that the platform's policy of censoring legal content that it deems to be harmful is, well, some people might call it a little bit controversial. And, but, but her stance is that the government should actually pass stronger laws. And she's, she's really happy to go along with whatever the government suggests for that. Here is YouTube's CEO.
This category of harmful, but not, but legal, has been, I think, where most of the discussion has been. And, you know, for us, we look at that content, and we think about the role that we play in society. We want to be doing the right thing for our users and for our creators. We also generate revenue from advertisers. And if we are serving content that is seen by our advertising community as not benefiting society, no advertiser's gonna want to appear on that. And they're certainly not gonna even want to appear on a different, you know, content that is positive if they think the platform as a whole is not being responsible. You know, our recommendation, if governments want to have more control over online speech, is to pass laws to have that be very cleanly and clearly defined, such that we can implement it.
You know what's great? It's, this took place in Germany, and the Germans know all about those kind of laws. I don't know, maybe they choose near Nuremberg, we could make some, anyway. This is phenomenal. First of all, advertiser, why do advertisers drop shows? And I know, because I've been the target for 20 years. Why do they drop shows? They don't drop shows because of average people. They drop shows because the Left organizes with money a big, huge campaign to get you driven off. That's why it happens. So advertisers, they don't give a flying crap. They want to sell their product. But the Left has forced them into this position to where, I don't know, I just, please, just leave us alone. And so they make the safe bet, because conservatives don't do that. Then she goes on to say, we just really want governments to make that decision and tell us what to do. That is the Great Reset. They don't care. They would rather work with China, honestly. They would rather work with China because the rules are clear. Don't do this, do this. Edit that out, or you're gone. They love that. Because, I mean, really, truly, imagine from their perspective, being in this job, and you didn't pull something because it was cool yesterday, and today it's not cool, and you're like, I don't know what it, I mean, think of how in constant churn their world is. They, they deserve it, they started it, they embraced it, but imagine that churn. It's a welcome relief to have the government control everything.
Look, there isn't a single entity that, whether it's them or the government, that ever sides with anyone on the right. It always goes in one direction, and that's why they love it, because it defaults to where they want to be anyway. But the bottom line is, what troubles me in what she said, is they keep talking about harmful language. I'm so tired of these snowflakes who go, what you said hurt me.
Yeah, speech is violence.
Speech doesn't hurt you. It doesn't. Punching you hurts you.
Yeah. Today, this morning, I was going through my show prep, and one of my producers put a video in. Did you see the blackbird thing in Mexico?
Yes.
Yeah, isn't that weird?
It was wild.
So like, there's 1,000 blackbirds, and all of a sudden, they just go to the ground. And then most of them get up and fly away. So I'm reading about it, and I'm about to click on the video, and I'm there by myself, and I'm like, no warning label. I mean, this could be very disturbing and graphic. I click on it, it has the warning label. Could be harmful. No, it's a bunch of birds. Most of them got up. I'm not traumatized. Good heavens.
But I just don't, we live in a world now that's completely subjective. I mean, I think it's harmful when you talk about how the Jets are gonna be a good team. I mean, as a Patriots fan, I mean, like, this is the dumbest thing ever. Like, if you, every, I mean, if we're starting to live in a world where what hurts your feelings is the new bar, then you can't say anything.
Yeah. Well, they make this argument that speech is violence, but actual violence is not violence. Like, they can burn cities down and set things on fire and trample-
Actual violence is violence if done by the right.
Okay, that's fair. You're right.
And non-violence by the truckers is potential violence.
That is, yes, in its direction.
But here's the problem. This is all just a joke. I mean, it's a scapegoat. They want to be able to censor people, but they don't want to say that they did it. So it's like, if the government comes up with something, then they can say, oh, it was them, not us, right? Because they, they want this whole Section 230 stuff to go away. They want an excuse not to actually have something happen. So their view is, if the government comes in and does it for us, then they can say to everyone, guys, it wasn't us, it was them. They're the ones who did this, these government people, and we're just abiding by it. But we all know where it ends up, which is it goes against everything on the right, and it helps everyone on the Left talk about, you know, because it never, ever hurts. I mean, we've seen this. You can suppress a story on Hunter Biden, that's okay. But you can, you know, ensure that no one talks about whether or not Hillary Clinton spied. I mean, there's, it's-
Did you hear what the New York Times said about the spying thing?
Be careful, because this could hurt my feelings.
I'll talk slowly gently. The New York Times, in the story that they did write about that, said, "Most of what is being said about Hillary Clinton is misinformation."
Yes.
And then the very next sentence was, "And it's also very complicated and confusing, and would require readers to use an enormous amount of attention to figure it all out," which makes one wonder whether we should be in the business of covering things like that in the first place. "It's too hard for their readers to figure out what."
Have you noticed, have you noticed, so when, when they were making the case about Trump and Russia, they took every dot that existed, and were like, this dot goes with that dot, she goes with that dot. And they've got, I mean, they connected the most random dots to say, see, it's Trump and Russia. When they have like five dots that are next to each other with Hillary Clinton, it's like, guys, you can't, you can't just connect them because they're next to each other. This doesn't just make sense.
And it's very complex.
It's complicated, and just because, but there was a story, and I think it was the Times, or it could have been the Post this morning, where they were talking about why what Durham's doing doesn't really make a ton of sense. And they were, they were making excuses. So one of the people that Durham has indicted is a Russian named Danchenko. And they were saying, the hard part for Durham is because he's not a native English speaker, it's gonna be hard to indict him, because he probably misunderstood what the FBI was asking him. In other words, they're already making excuses why this Russian guy lied to the FBI. Like, hey, he probably didn't lie. He just misunderstood.
He didn't mean to.
He didn't mean to.
And I'm not talking directly to his attorneys. I'm not saying that maybe that's what he should be thinking about right now.
There's nothing that the Left could do that they can't excuse.
I know. I know.
Here, you know, this is why this probably happened. You know, it wasn't, they were, they were just testing some internet stuff, and they happened to hack. But that was just a scheduled thing.
This is, I mean, Donald Trump was right when he said this is bigger than Watergate. This is the biggest scandal of all time in America. I can't think of a time where a president has been betrayed and damaged like this. I mean, they ran Lincoln through the wringer, but they didn't do this. This is way, this is treason.
Glenn, the funny thing is, I have always said that I don't like to live life looking in the rearview mirror and living with regrets. It's just not a healthy way to live. But from the campaign through the transition to the first seven months of Trump, right, it was, you guys are stupid. There's no way you can win a race. You can't, you can't talk to each other. You're a bunch of numbnuts. Then, this is the sloppiest transition ever. Then it became, no, you're completely controlled by the Russians. And it's hard not to sit back sometimes and say, can you imagine if this didn't, like, if you guys actually didn't treat, like, if this didn't, wasn't the narrative, and we actually could have run a real just-
Investigation.
Investigation, if we could have actually legislated, and Trump's policies could have been implemented. I stood in front of the press corps every day for whatever it was, six months, and it was Russia, this, and this connection to that, which we all know now wasn't true. And yet, it was a made-up narrative that we knew at the time. And how do you disprove something that didn't happen? You can't. And yet, now, we actually have proof that something, that there's an actual guy from the Department of Justice filing things, and they're like, guys, we don't know.
And at the same time, they are the ones saying, we're providing misinformation and conspiracy theories.
Right. Yeah.
They never had, right, they had a dossier, right?
Right.
And I was the guy who literally, on, what was it, January 5th, took the phone call from CNN, saying, I was in the room. I literally sat in the room, because I had a security clearance with Comey- clearance with Comey and Clapper and Brennan, and got briefed with Trump on Anaxa.
Oh my god.
And I was there, and I'm literally on the phone with him going, guys, that's not what happened, that's not what went down. And they're like, well, we're going to run with it anyway, we have a source. I literally was like, guys, I sat in the room, this isn't like secondhand account, didn't happen the way you're describing it, this isn't what happened, you know, here, and I, you know, can disprove some of these things, and yet, still went with it, okay? Now, we have a Department of Justice, nonpartisan career special prosecutor, special counsel, and they're going, but, you know, I can't trust this guy. I'm like, wait a second. I mean, it's amazing.
It really is.
The difference of the standard. One is a bought and paid for dossier that's been discredited and disproven, the other one is a career DOJ guy, and they're like, I don't know about this.
Because it's not about truth.
No.
It's not about truth.
All right, we got to take a break, but first we want to thank our sponsor, Grove Collaborative. So here's the deal with Grove. As you guys know, I am the conservative hippie, and I do like to have cleaning products, toiletries, all of those things in my house that are family friendly, so they're good for the kids, they're good for the animals. And I do have about a billion animals now at my house, and I want to make sure that they are safe with whatever products I am using. You got to go to Grove, okay? Because Grove is the same really, really high-quality, environmentally friendly, green products that you could get at, I don't know, places like Whole Foods and places where you're going to spend a billion dollars on like two things. So Grove is going to give it to you. They've got concentrated cleaners, refillable glass bottles, they've got all of the cleaners, Mrs. Meyers they have, which is one of my favorites, they've got sustainable products for every room in your house, and you're going to save a fortune by going to Grove. All right, you got to go to grove.co, I'm sorry, grove.com/news. You will get a free gift set worth up to $50 for your first order. Shipping is very fast, and it is free. You got to go there right now, it is grove.com/news. That is grove.com/news.
Oh, I know.
All right, the NATO Secretary General Jens Stoltenberg contradicted Moscow's claims that it was pulling troops back from the Ukrainian border, and said he has seen no proof of any withdrawal efforts. Now, we talk about this on the show all the time, what's going on here. And as you both know, the show is called The News and Why It Matters, and I have had conflicting opinions on this show as to whether or not it should matter to the average American citizen what is going on between Russia and Ukraine. So I would like for you two gentlemen, you're obviously both very heavy hitters, so I would like to hear from you guys.
Why it matters?
Why it matters?
To the average American, I don't think it does. Long-term, it really does. Because we look so weak right now. If he takes Crimea, or if he takes Ukraine, that is a signal, China, ah, when you get ready, when you get those amphibious boats, you just give us a call, we'll lay low, you can go take Taiwan. So it matters on our credibility, we look weak and terrible. Why this president is making this, I mean, it's almost like, come on, Putin, you want a war, right? I mean, look, I'm going to back out, and you want a war. No, I really don't want a war. Yeah, you do. I mean, I've never seen anything like this. Is it just me?
I watched his comment, first of all, I 100% agree with, because it doesn't matter, matter, like, whether they take them tomorrow, it's not like anyone's going on vacation to Ukraine.
Right.
But it does matter, big picture, long-term, in terms of, China's literally just going, okay, if they can take them, then we'll take Taiwan, and it's, and then it goes from there, right? And I cannot, I'm obsessed with China. I just, I don't think people understand that China has a larger military than we do now, they own the digital footprint of every single American, they have an economic superiority that we don't fully, and literally someday they're just going to, okay, and flick a switch, and it's.
They're working on CRISPR stuff that.
Oh, they're playing the long game.
It's not even, but we've always thought it's the longer game, it's just becoming that longer game is now kind of the shorter range game.
It is, it is, everything right now is, how do you go bankrupt? How did that guy go bankrupt? Took a long time, and then all at once. We're at the all at once part now.
I mean, I've, you know, do talk about this in the book, I'd always have to be marketing and selling, but I will say, like, they are in our ports, they're in our academics, I mean, I'm getting off topic here, but understand that Glenn's right, this is just, what's happening there, they're watching. Second, more urgently, what I saw yesterday when Biden went out, I'm watching this press conference, it wasn't a press conference, it was a rambling, and I was like, what are you saying? Because he said stuff for like 12 minutes, and I walked away from it going, I don't understand what you just did, or why you did it.
He doesn't either.
It was like, I need to say something, but I have to say a lot of words. I didn't, I mean, it was literally just, if he says things, then we're going to do something about it, but I don't know what it's going to be, but he'll know that we did it someday soon. And it was, I literally, when it was done, I looked at the two people next to me, and I go, what was your takeaway? Because I'm confused what he said. But I don't think, we have led from behind in this, the meetings have all either had the German Chancellor or French President Macron in Moscow, we sent Kamala Harris, our bordersaw, who is now in Europe, we've shown weakness, and so it's not just Putin who wants to rebuild the USSR, and we've let China see this. So I just, it's not about Ukraine, and that's the problem. So if you're saying, why does it matter to America? Because it's not about Ukraine. It's about how we project ourselves on the world stage. It's how Europe looks at us right now, and right now, Europe's going, I thought you guys led. And it's about how China looks at us, it's about how Russia looks at us. You saw the other day, when there was a press event, and the German Chancellor is sitting next to Biden, and he says, I will shut down the Nord Stream pipeline if Russia does this, and the Chancellor says, I don't think so. And when asked by our reporter, how do you do this? He goes, I promise you, we will. He couldn't answer, it just, that doesn't look like, and by the way, he could have done this 10 months ago. So I just, I worry about how we look, and I think that's why you should care.
So I read something disturbing, I'll keep it quick. I read something disturbing this morning, and it was more of a feeling than the actual words coming from the White House. You know, they're doing the, what is it, Sexy Tiger War Games, or whatever, that White Tiger War Games that they're doing? And I just kind of had this feeling that this is Biden trying to make up for Afghanistan to try to look tough. Is, are we considering, do you think, in, even in his crazy mind, he's considering that we would actually do something if Russia went in?
No, 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 no. But what, here's what, I think you're on to something, which is, I think that somehow they think Putin's going to back down, and when he does, they'll take credit, which I don't know how, with the exception of a complicit press, which he has, I think he's going to say, see what I did worked. Which I don't know how you do that, like, how you can look yourself in the mirror and say what I did.
That makes total sense.
But because he's going to say.
Well, they're doing it with COVID right now.
But that's different, because you can, you can lie enough to say, I did a mask mandate, and Fauci was on TV 50,000 times.
I mean, this week, what really got me was, this week, Putin is having talks, he's having talks, and the White House comes out and goes, yeah, but we don't know, I mean, they could still go to war. And it's like, why?
But you remember, you remember, they said, they're going, I mean, Zelensky, the president of Ukraine, keeps saying, please stop doing this, you're fending the flames. I watched an ABC News reporter saying on Saturday night, I'm in Kiev, and people were out at the bars last night, it looks like business as usual, no one thinks this, and the Ukrainian president keeps telling Biden, please stop doing this, you're getting our people all worked up. When it doesn't happen, Biden's going to go, see, I stopped it.
You're right.
Yeah, that's a great point. All right, we've got to take a break, but first we want to thank our sponsor, Patriot Mobile. So, look, these, we're talking about all of the wokeness, this is infiltrating all of these companies that you are giving your hard-earned money to, you got to, if you are still with a big-name mobile carrier, Verizon, any of those places, you got to switch to Patriot Mobile, all right? They are America's only Christian conservative wireless provider. It's 2022, so I don't know if you guys know this, but it's all, they all use the same towers, all of these carriers use the same tower, so it's going to be the same nationwide coverage, plus you get peace of mind that your money is not supporting the left, who by the way, really, really hates you. So you don't want to be giving them your money. They've got plans, Patriot Mobile does, to fit any budget, and they have 100% US-based customer support, they provide very, very, very exceptional customer support for you. And, look, they are alongside with you in this battle, they support organizations fighting for religious freedom, constitutional rights, and by the way, veteran and first responder heroes, and if you are one of those, you will get a discount on top of their already reasonably priced plans. You got to go to patriotmobile.com/news. Get free activation with the offer code NEWS, that is patriotmobile.com/news. All right, we've got a couple minutes here, and Sean, you know, we've been talking about China, we've been talking about Biden and Harris, I think it's only right that we talk just for a minute here about your book, Radical Nation. It is Joe Biden and Kamala Harris's dangerous plan for America. I mean, these are, well, I don't know that.
Isn't their plan, though?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
They both are so out of touch.
I was going to say, two people who are anti-American, but I'm like, well, I don't know about Joe, I don't think he knows what's going on.
So the case that I make is this, and I mentioned it earlier in the show, but you can create a legacy if you do things. You create jobs, you go to war, you win a war, you do whatever, you do something monumental. Biden's case is, he knew that time was short, he's going to be a one-termer, and so he said, I can be progressive by appointing people, basically. And I think that, and by touting progressive positions, and then becoming the North Star, if you will, to progressive causes going forward, then being like, well, Biden did all of these things, be better than Biden, appoint more people, do more than he did. I think that that's, and when you realize the backgrounds of these people, and one of them, I mean, that's what we have to understand, Pete Buttigieg, I have a chapter on all these people, Pete Buttigieg is the Secretary of Transportation, is 38 years old, he was the mayor of South Bend, Indiana, has 100,000 people and 66 buses in the town, 66 buses. He's now leading our highways, railways, and seaways. You wonder why we have a supply chain issue.
Yeah, I think leading is generous.
I mean, seriously, there are more buses that go in front of my house in Alexandria, Virginia, than were in his entire town. But we appointed him because he checked a box. We have, you know, we have a Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Dennis McDonough, who had never served in the military, never served on a veteran service organization, you know, he's never worked in healthcare, which is the largest single platform that the VA serves. I don't even know that he has a mortgage, which is the second thing that the VA does. But why did we appoint him? But these are the things that you need to know and understand about the Biden administration, because once you understand the psyche and the id of what's happening, you get it. And that's the thing, is so many times people are scratching their head going, why are they doing this? I make the case in the book that once you understand the motives and the background of these people, and understand Kamala Harris, I have a chapter called President in Waiting, this is, I mean, she'll do and say whatever you want, but you understand, and then the point that I make about the border is this, they're not solving it for a reason. These are voters to them. It's easy to solve, Trump showed us how to do it. This is all about making sure that Democrats have future voters. There's a reason that they don't want voter ID, there's a reason that in, what is it, 26 states, you can vote by just having a license, and that we give you a license as an illegal alien in this country. It makes sense, you just have to understand the plan.
Yeah, yeah. So, look, I don't, you got to go pick it up if you don't already have it, Radical Nation, you can find it everywhere that books are sold. We got to take a break, we'll be back. All right, so as I said, Radical Nation, make sure to pick it up, but we have another author at the table.
I mean, he's crazy, too. He's just.